...of the P O B, which I agree with your amendment. But I would like to replace it with no member of the police oversight task force shall be appointed to the P O B and no one who served on the police oversight commission at any time within the two years prior to the adoption of this amended ordinance shall be appointed to the P O B. And then I would like to say however, or however we would say it, that any of them needs to be appointed after 12 months. So we're not eliminating them completely.
But at the start.
But at the start, we start with fresh blood, no preconceived ideas, no biases, and we get this going in the right direction with new ideas. And that's the only intent of this. We need to get, if we start with the same people who have played this game, it won't necessarily turn out to be a big game. And that's the intent of this.
Mr. President.
So is the suggestion that we add your language to this?
Yes, please, except with the language on the end of mine, not, the way it's written now in the form amendment that I introduced, it would be forever. And it should be after the first, if that's appropriate, after the first 12 months of the existence of this P O B.
What is the role of this council? We have amendment on the floor. Amendment number 13, Councilwoman Gervini, or Councilwoman Winter?
Mr. President, I agree with the first amendment that says, you know, what the Ben, Senator's amendment. I must be cautious about disallowing people to apply. This is an application process. And I don't know that we should have the right to essentially choose who cannot serve on the board. Because that's essentially what it's saying to the second part there. If we join together, this would be saying that no member of the oversight task force or pre-existing oversight commission.
Not pre-existing.
Well, the disbanded, right?
Anytime within the two years prior to. So they could have been there and not have been released.
I think it's, on some level, and I'll ask Mr. Lenders, and Mr. ...
You mean what also about, Mr. Lenders, whether this is unconstitutional? Can we do that?
Mr. President, Councilor Gervini, the council was perfectly within its policy prerogative to make the determination about who can serve prospectively. Sometimes, you know, putting books and classifications can raise constitutional implications, but I think that there's a rational basis for the council to do it here, which based on a policy discussion, there very well may be. I don't think, I think that it's on the ground to do what you please.
And Mr. President, can I ask what the rationale would be?
Mr. President, Councilor Gervini, as I've heard it discussed, is to make a clean break with fresh minds and fresh cases.
And I'd like to ask Mr. Greenwood the same question that you asked Mr. Gervini, Councilwoman Gervini. Is it a violation of an individual's constitutional rights?
Mr. President, it's not a constitutional violation to disqualify somebody from, only a temporary disqualification from serving on the board. I think the Councilmember Jones, amendment to her own amendment, solves the problem. It gives you a clean break, but it invites the best talent to stay focused and stay involved. It doesn't cast aspersions on anybody. It just, just that we're creating a new entity from two existing ones, we're creating this with new people, and it's perfectly appropriate. I think you're going to have no shortage of completely qualified and interested in volunteering candidates.
And I have a follow-up question. Don't you believe though, that you've got members with experience, both within the police oversight commission that served, and also members of the task force that gave a lot of their time, that they would be a great addition to the new P O B because of their knowledge and their involvement?
Mr. President, I agree that they would be terrific additions to the P O B. After 12 months, I think that's giving a clean start with new board members, not new staff, new board members. People that are not part of an entrenched pattern of working together according to a previous system or previous rules gives the agency the ability to create its own civilian oversight structure. There's another amendment, the board will have the authority to make its own rules, set its own protocols. You want those to be in the very first board that does that.
Let's go ahead, Mr. Councilwoman Winter, then Councilman Bennett.
But either is within your prerogative.
Councilwoman Winter, Councilman Bennett, then Gervini.
I guess the only point I was going to make, and I don't know whether ultimately, and we do have another amendment having to do with the appointment process, but ultimately it can come to a vote of the council regardless. And I don't necessarily disagree with the rationale here, but do we really want to get down in there and start excluding things? You know, maybe there's one person that will be fine as long as they're not paired up with a couple other, you know, I don't know. These would be things that we would be needing to consider when we first enpanel the board.
Councilwoman Bennett, if we exclude for 12 months, then we don't have to worry
about whether people pair up well or don't. We don't have any preconceived ideas. I think the major thing here is we don't want to face possibly operating like we have in the past that didn't work, and we believe that's why we're doing this. Why would we start over with some of the same people, or some of the people who saw the, wanted to make their own ordinance, which is what the task force, and thank you all for serving on this. But they're the ones who wanted to form and set the rules, and what we do is, I don't think it's appropriate for those same people to be the ones who start this out and try to make it work. I think there would be a tendency to want to bend it to what they thought they would if when they first brought their recommendation to the council. And I think this is just one more group of independent thinkers, independent ideas that will make this more citizen-driven.
Councilwoman Gervini, then Councilwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, all these are kind of arguments, but one of the arguments that I've heard over the years on the dais and other places is institutional knowledge, corporate ability to think on your feet, I mean, all of those things that we apply to everything else, and now all of a sudden we're saying corporate knowledge and historical perspective is no longer any good. I caution us to be careful that we, I don't, if I was part of the task force, a part of that group that now is being denigrated for having done such a good job, I would wonder if I'd ever want to serve, and I think we're missing out on some very knowledgeable, good people.
Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gervini, thank you, Mr. President. I think that's a reasonably good point, but I also think that's why we are, we have staff, and staff is the institutional knowledge, and staff is the understanding and confidence that we're. And I just think one more set of new ideas, one new group of people working together and trying to solve this will not take us back to any portion of what we've had in the past with any people we've had in the past. And notice that this goes back for two years. So we're not just eliminating one, we're eliminating quite a few people here for 12 months. I think it's an essential part of making this work, and I urge your support.
Councilwoman Harris.
I see the merit of both things. I'm thinking about a third alternative method, the reasoning for anybody, is maybe have a majority of the first board, the people who have never served on the police oversight commission or task force, and that way.
Councilwoman Vice President Jones.
Councilwoman Harris again, that's a very good alternative, except that if we have very, very strong personalities that started on the first task force and the first board, they will overpower the new people, and the new people will not be able to put their ideas in place. I'm sorry, I just, I just think what we're going to be fresh, we need to be fresh when we start it off.
Councilwoman Harris, then Councilwoman Gibson.
How long are the terms of these board members? Yeah, so three years. So you're saying for 12 months, you're really knocking these people out in terms of two years.
Necessarily, keep it quick.
But so unless you want to make the first board a year into, I don't know, that's what I'm like about, you have these people that have been involved, and then you do it sort of, Councilor Gibson, you suggest, you say, you know, thanks for your service, we're going to reward you by telling you to go away. And I guess I'd say, well, I think, I mean, these people are intelligent and they've heard what we're trying to do, and I think I trust them to the actual role of council term.
Councilwoman Gibson, then Councilwoman Vice President Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's very reasonable thing to allow sort of a, not really a cooling off, but just a settling period for 12 months before considering members of the task force to come on, and I think, or to apply to be on the P O B. And not all institutional knowledge is, or corporate knowledge. History is good. I mean, we learn things, you know, that we need to stay away from, you know, we learn things that we should not be repeating. And I don't, and I'm not saying that really alluding that that's what we're trying to address here. I just think that, you know, these people served very well and gave a very important input. Now I think this needs to be sort of organic and grow on its own for a short period of time. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gervini, then Councilwoman Bennett.
Thanks, Mr. President. Councilor Gibson and Jones, both, that's my turn. To make sure that we don't have any sort of stragglers, Merren Wells and...
Inorganic.
Yeah, inorganic. And corporate knowledge is not all good, but it's not all bad. The other thing that I worry about is, as Councilwoman Harris pointed out, this is not 12 months, this is three years. And after three years, for us to, and I know we can stagger them and do other things, but we're essentially telling people, you know what, don't apply, see you in three years. And if you're still interested, we may consider you.
Councilwoman Bennett?
I have a question for staff. We have staggered terms. So how's that going to work?
Mr. President, Councilwoman Bettin, yeah, with staggered three-year terms and nine members, the first, the first enpanel board would have three members serving one-year terms, three serving two-year terms, and three serving three-year terms. So at the 12-month period, there would be three members to be hired to reappoint.
So, yeah, so the inclination, unless they really didn't serve very well, would be to reappoint after the first year. The natural inclination of most people would be to do that. And are they term limited? The person that serves a one-year term, are they term limited till only one more term after that? So in other words, a total of four years? Or we got it written?
Mr. President, Councilor Bettin, the ordinance refers to a term limit of two terms. So if you didn't draw the short straw, then you would be ordered to four years.
Councilwoman Gervini, then Councilwoman Harris.
Councilwoman Harris, please.
I think I legally disagree with that because I know what we have under the county commission, if someone gets appointed halfway through the term, they interpret two terms to mean two full terms. So I think if you have a one-year term, we'd serve two more full terms. I think that's kind of general protocol, I'm not launching it all, but, so, but in any event, if it was only one more term, we still, the people who are involved in this process, you're kind of telling them, you know, it may be a lot before you're eligible. People who were first appointed, they have an opportunity to get reappointed within years, are doing a good job. National information would be to thank people for doing a good job, et cetera. Last night.
Councilwoman Vice President Jones.
Thank you, and I think we'll wrap it up with this. And I just want to say that we're not saying that they weren't important, we are using their suggestions, we are doing, we didn't ask them to serve on this task force, and they can serve on this task force with the idea of being on the new police oversight board. And that doesn't make sense. We can't possibly think that everyone who serves on the task force or officer's suggestions is then going to be appointed to a board that they worked on. That doesn't make sense. And as far as the length of the terms and when they could be available, then we know a lot of people who quit these boards or who are removed from the boards. This is going to be a very idly, strenuous position, and I think there are going to be a lot of hours and a lot of work, and it's going to be very difficult. And I can see that there might be some people who don't want that second term even after 12 months. Or there might be some people who get removed. We have several reasons here to get removed. I don't think we are going to simply eliminate these people because they can't serve in the first 12 months. And I think, I don't know, we appreciate their volunteer, they did a wonderful job, they spent hours and hours, but it never said anywhere when they signed up that they were going to be appointed to any police oversight.
And tonight, we have a four member of the P O C and members of the task force here tonight. I don't see any of them jumping up and down saying they want to serve on this board, but I would hope that we would give them that opportunity if they made that decision to apply for it.
In 12 months.
Councilwoman Bennett?
And Mr. President, I'd like to go ahead and vote on the amendment as written, and then I think that is to preclude us from then having a second vote. I'll go ahead and get the first part out of the way.
To remove it.
Yeah, to remove the language, sort of.
Okay, we have a four amendment, number 13, to bill number 4 sub 230-14-13. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Yes? opposed? Okay, three amendments. Councilwoman Vice President Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move amendment number 14, which will now have out of it the first part of this, which is to remove the, which we just did, but to replace it with the language, no member of the police oversight task force shall be appointed to the P O B and no one who served on the police oversight commission at any time within the two years prior to the adoption of this amended ordinance shall be appointed to the P O B for a 12-month period, within a 12-month period.
We have a motion, a second, and a second by Councilwoman. Are there any questions? See none? All those in favor of form number 14, 4 sub 230-14-13? Raise your hand and say yes.
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 Yes? opposed?
No.
That fails in a five to three vote. We are now on item U, Councilwoman Bennett, that is form amendment number 15.
Okay, so I'll move, I'll move a floor amendment, and let's see, I think we've got this covered, it's sent with the new version. Then we have a two-thirds majority in language already, I'm not going to move this amendment.
Okay, I have a view of the law, and we're on page, Councilwoman Bennett?
Okay, this would be, where are we now?
Number 15.
Number 15, on the form, number 15. And this reads on page nine, line eight, replace the word nine with the word seven, and this makes a seven-person board, which I feel is more amiable.
We have a motion.
This line is quite, quite a bit of precedence for this, if you look at some of the boards around.
Form amendment number 15, 4 sub 230-14-13? Councilwoman Bennett, then Councilwoman Gervini. It's getting late.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bennett. As a problem with people going to national meetings, they get all these ideas. Actually, this, I think, is a number that is certainly more manageable, whatever word it might use. And therefore, the reason it was nine is because we're not in the council's choosing. However, the concise little formula that we were given a while ago, about three the first year, three the second year, and three the next year, now it goes out the window. But I guess we could put three, two, two. I, I think it's a more manageable number. Nine, like I said, was just historical, if you want to call it that, because of how they were chosen. So unless somebody has a real mind, you need to keep it at nine.
Councilwoman Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilor. The only issue that I worry about is if we have two members absent, then you only have five members to do business. That would be the only thing, and I don't know how the tennis was on the previous ones, but, you know, that's the only issue. I would have to two.
And I have concerns also going from nine to seven. If we recall, the last P O C, we went from nine to six to three to two. And when we put together the task force, it was an application process. I believe there was probably over 100 applicants that wanted to serve in that capacity. I'm not sure how many applicants we would get here, but if you have that many people wanting to serve on a board and that are willing to give their time voluntarily, I think nine members works that way. You've got a diverse group of individuals that, you know, hopefully the staff can find the nine members, but I think nine works better than seven because if you're going to have that many applicants, if there's over 100 applicants, that's less than 10% of those applicants that will be appointed to that position. If we go to sevens, it can be, that number's going to be even lower. But I just feel nine members has worked, and again, Councilwoman Winter brings up a good point, if some of those members are absent, and what we saw in the last P O C, we ended up with two members. So I think it's important that we have enough members to participate and create a quorum. Councilwoman Gervini?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to say seven, I think we have seven people here from the task, task force and, you know, and if they raise their hand, we can swear on them right now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Bennett, then Councilwoman Gibson?
Yeah, just all kidding aside, I think one, one advantage would be we could probably get the board and panel quicker, but I'm not married to the number.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for form number 15, to bill number 4 sub 230-14-13. All those in favor of the amendment, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Yes?
I'm sorry.
opposed?
No.
No? That fails, the no's, that fails in a five to three vote. Okay, you have your own numbers? Councilwoman Winter, number 16?
Mr. President, this is a later amendment, but I'm going to go ahead and read it, and then like to have some input from everyone. What amendment is this?
16.
This is amendment number 16, on page eight, on line 30, after the period, strike the remainder of the line and strike 31 in its entirety, and insert the following. The P O B shall dedicate a majority, more than 50% of its time to the function described in this subsection. On page nine, after line four, insert the following, new par C, subsection five, section nine dash four one, four dash one dash four, reading the following. Within six months of its appointment, the P O B shall draft and approve policies, rules, and procedures that ensure that the P O B shall dedicate a majority of its time to the function described in this subsection. Explanation, this amendment will help ensure that the majority of the work of the P O B will be spent on policy development and recommendation.
We have a motion and a second for form amendment number 16, to 4 sub 230-14, and I think we'd like Mr. Simonson to come up. Do you want to elaborate on the form amendment, Mr. Simonson?
Mr. President, members of the council, yeah, we felt like this was maybe a compromise approach to try to address some of the concerns around ensuring, guaranteeing that the P O B really does devote its time to these policy questions. I'm not entirely comfortable with this as the solution, but I think if we're going to pass this ordinance tonight, we want to see as strong a mandate for this P O C to really get after these policy issues. And it's, you know, we just have a long history in the city with our civilian oversight body that has failed to do that, and it's been documented over and over again. And so whatever we can do to shore up that piece of the ordinance, I think is really important, and so we offered, I offered this as a possible solution.
Councilwoman Winter, then Councilwoman Gervini. Councilwoman Gervini?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Simonson, thank you also for weighing in. This is a question that I've had for tonight. For sure, I make sure that, I don't know the numbers, but it's, I like the majority or more than 50%. Mr. Greenwood, would you also weigh in on that, if you don't mind, Mr. Simonson?
Go ahead, Mr. Greenwood.
Certainly, Mr. President, Council, Councilor Gervini, this language was something that we discussed during the break, specifically to ensure, to address the concerns that members of the public expressed and that the I R O expressed about the functioning of the members of the previous P O C. This will ensure that they, at their very first six months, will develop protocols so that they are spending their time where we really need them spending their time.
And, Mr. President, this is, I strongly recommend, please. I was curious as to why you came up with more than 50%. Obviously, you know that that's majority, but that could be 50.001% of the time. And I know that I'm being somewhat facetious, but why 50%? Why wasn't it more than 65%? Whatever. Because what I heard was that there was a lot of involvement in the minutia, and case by case, and that sort of thing. And it seems like 50% is still kind of a high number of involvement in those stuff, and not enough of a number of important studies. Or important, or, I don't know, I guess somewhere along the line, I like to see a threshold of what is considered policy and what is considered day-to-day work and risk.
And, Mr. President, Councilmember Gervini, I think it's difficult to put a precise number here. I think the intention here is to make it pretty clear to the community and to the very first board that what it is supposed to be spending its time on is not on individual cases. It is supposed to be spending the vast majority, not just a bare majority, but it is supposed to be functioning primarily to do this work. And they'll, they'll figure out what that, what that rationale is.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sure. Greenwood ends. Mr. Simonson? And I guess the part, the argument, I guess what I just said was, or would be, that 50% is kind of the breakthrough, if I'm reading it correctly. But maybe over time, the P O B will decide, you know what, it's much more important for us to be looking at this, so let's spend more time on that, and it could rise to the 75%. So if that's sort of the intent or the underlying message somehow, that that's something I would be comfortable with.
Mr. President, Councilor Gervini, partly we drafted it that, I drafted it that way because there was already language meaning in the ordinance that, that specifically states a majority of the time. We add the language of, that meaning 50%, more than 50%. And I would just add that even while we do want the P O C to devote a majority of its time to these policy matters, it is crucial that they are also involved in some of the servicing complaint processes because unless they're actually digging into those complaints, and I know this from experience with our own agency, they may not be actually identifying some of the issues that require some sort of larger analysis, systemic analysis. So I think it is necessary to have a bit of a balance between them to take the case.
Councilwoman Bennett?
Yeah, to me, to me, this makes sense, and my comments are good.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for form amendment number 16, to bill number 4 sub 230-14, all those in favor, signify by saying yes. Yes? opposed? That carries unanimously.
Mr. Greenwood wants to go. I see him wince when he gets up.
Mr. Torick, have we got some comments?
Oh, okay, I have, no, I wasn't joking, I have something.
I have a proposed amendment.
We have another proposed amendment?
Mr. President, we have a proposed amendment regarding personnel matters on section, on page six, line 21. We can read it to you, and then you can discuss it with Mr. Torick if you like.
Okay, that'd be fine. Mr. Torick, let's go ahead and read it in the reference, make some comments.
Mr. President, councilors of the amendment, would be on page six, line 21, and serve after the order of procedures and before the period, except for personnel matters, or shall remain under the authority of the city attorney's office.
Okay, Mr. Torick?
Mr. President, councilors...
Uh, Mr. President, councilors, in regards to, that's not working. Mr. President, councilors, in regards to the personnel matters, for example,
Go back on.
For example, the disciplinary action that had to occur at the I R O, we handled that. And if there is something that's going to be handled for disciplinary purposes with staff, separate from anything to do with the police, with staffing that is working there, someone's going to have to do that with a pre-debt, they're going to have to do the necessary investigation. And then some type of actions going to have to occur with a hearing officer. And then the due process rights will take place where that person has the ability to go to the personnel board. And I think that maybe your intent of it's not to don't involve us, and we will have, it'll be handled by the P O B.
Okay, do you want to go and read that into the record, the amendment, and then we can introduce it? It hasn't been introduced yet.
Uh, Mr. President, on page six, line twenty-one, after the word procedures, insert the words except for personnel matters which shall remain under the authority of the City Attorney's Office.
We have a motion and a second for floor amendment number seventeen to four, substitute three, oh dash fourteen dash thirteen. Any questions? Counselor Bettin.
So is this intended to mean any personnel matter, including police officers or whatever? Or are we talking about internal personnel to the, to the organization?
Mr. President, Counselor Bettin, the latter. The ordinance makes clear that the staff at the agency will be regular city employees and they'll be subject to the same personnel rules and all those same points and so on.
So the suggestion would be to add a word there, except you made the word internal or agency personnel matters? C P O A personnel matter.
Sorry, so, Mr. President, Counselor Bettin, to clarify that, if that's, the will is on page six, line twenty-one, after the word procedures and sort of except for C P O A personnel matters, which shall remain under the authority of the City Attorney's Office.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for floor amendment number seventeen to bill four, substitute three, oh fourteen dash thirteen. All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. We are back on the bill.
I have one more amendment.
Okay.
And I, it has a amendment, or my name on it, but it has to do with the collective bargaining process.
Floor amendment number eighteen.
Actually, it is.
Bargaining.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, yes. I think we did an amendment. And we've discussed this with staff and with Mr. Greenwood and so the local council feels about this. But anyway, this is to try to just eliminate the conflict between the collective bargaining agreement and this ordinance by essentially saying that any conflict that doesn't get enforced in the ordinance until the collective bargaining agreement expires in July, which is only about nine months from now. Section five, to the extent that provisions of this ordinance conflict with the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Elbury Police Officer Association, A P O A, those provisions of the ordinance will not be effective until the expiration of that agreement with the A P O A in July, 2015. So I'll go ahead and I'll move floor number eighteen.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for floor amendment rating. Counselor Bettin.
Could you clarify what we're talking about here, what specific conflicts or developments? Um, I think it's a disagreement, that's why I didn't want you to sit down. Because I know it's difficult. For those who can't see on T V, our consultant has a condition that makes it hard to get up and down. So I appreciate you doing that for us, sir.
Your lawyer, sir. I think this is, Mr. President, Counselor Harris, I think this is largely unnecessary, but it's within the council's prerogative. It's an insurance policy. If you adopt the amendment, it ensures that to the extent that there's a disagreement about whether something in the ordinance conflicts with the contract, that we would agree it wouldn't take, go into effect until the expiration of the existing contract. You can do that. I don't believe there's anything that's in the ordinance that is actually in conflict with the collective bargaining agreement, especially now that you addressed the guarantee issues. I think they're successful, but it's well within the council's prerogative.
Any other questions, Counselor Gervinho?
I'm concerned that A P O A was concerned about this, that there was a tacit statement about how they could go to court. It's a whole thing was instituted, so I see how this would help us with that. But I'd like to see if there's someone, if I may, Mr. President, if there's someone from A P O A or whoever would like to speak to it, I may reclarify it to a larger degree. Although I agree with Mr. Greenwood that I think it's been answered.
Counselors.
Counselor Gibson, please.
The other things that it would run into conflict with are obviously not just the guarantee issue, but the language that you have in there with the amount of days that, the hundred and twenty days that are given. The amount of time that's dictated to file the complaint is also in there as well. And the amount of time that it, discipline is imposed, or that the amount of time that the department or the administration has to impose discipline is also affected by it as well. So there are several issues that are affected within the contract, other than the guarantee itself, so, councilmembers.
Counselor Harris.
And thank you, Ms. Lopez. Is A P O A seriously considering filing civil lawsuit to keep these provisions from coming into effect if we pass this?
Uh, President Sanchez and Counselor Perez, honestly, I think there would be civil litigation that would be put in place. Obviously, I haven't had feedback from the membership yet, or we haven't had the board vote on it. We were hoping that we would get more time or that a deferral would be put in place. And like we had said, that you had more feedback from your community, not just a task force that was put in place. Because when he said that he has collaborative feedback from everybody, I've met with Mr. Greenwood on two occasions, and he has had no feedback from the association. So I can assure you, when he says he speaks for the rank and file of our officers, I don't know which officer she's talking about, because it is not our department's rank and file that he speaks for.
And thanks, and I'm proud of Mr. Greenwood, the talk was first passed. But I'm thinking that really this would only probably adjust every handful of cases prior to July, 2015, and that would keep us on the litigation. So that was my question.
And counselors, I would just hope that, you know, when you guys are discussing, and you guys have all discussed this, and you guys talk about how it'll be putting more pressure on the people that are in this position. And I know Counselor Jones has said herself that it hasn't worked with the certain bodies that you guys have had in place. I think you guys are putting a lot more work on them, especially limiting it to the seven members that you will have. Because if you think of the statistics of what we have going through Internal Affairs, the Independent Review Office, and cases that are handled in-house that are less than a letter of reprimand or a writ of lory, you're looking at about six hundred cases. And I hope that you guys took that into account, and your depending are basically seven people to determine and extensively investigate seven hundred incidences that occurred with officers throughout the year.
That'll be nine members.
Well, I'm going to keep it at nine, sir.
Right. Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President, but Mr. Greenwood, as far as, is there some of this that is in conflict from the advice of the D O J? I mean, I just want, this bill, I understand the intent of it, but does it delay putting this bill into process? By having, and it could be in conflict with both the department of justice and the decree?
Mr. President, Counselor Winter, in my opinion, if you pass the amendment, while it is an insurance policy of sorts, and it makes certain that there's not going to be anything in conflict, or perceived conflict with the collective bargaining agreement that would go take effect while the contract's still in effect, what it will mean is that we will have a less than finished civilian oversight mechanism in place at the time that we sign the agreement. That is true. Thank you.
Counselor Gervinho.
And that concerns me, because it's tentative to defer it. Because I think the D O J will say, well, you're not finished. You know, thank you for your effort, but it's not a complete package.
And I'm also very concerned about that issue regarding the D O J and the position. You know, I think that Counselor Harris brings up a good point. This is only until mid-year fifteen. But at the same time, I think that we cannot afford to delay this. This community is wanting to see some major reforms, and they want to see some major reforms with the police oversight work. And I think if the Department of Justice looks at this, because in the end, they are going to tell us, and it's going to be in that consent decree, what they want done. They understand also that there's an issue regarding the guarantee, because it is a Supreme Court ruling. And we need to abide by that ruling, because if it comes back later on to haunt us, and we do have one of the individuals that goes out and speaks, then it could be a major lawsuit for the City of Albuquerque. But I just feel that I need realery to support this amendment in this forum based on what I'm hearing. And it could delay, you know, the cost and problems with the Department of Justice.
And, Mr. President, we, very definitely, this is the subject of a complete oversight mechanism and complete protections that both protect officers and protect complainants. That's always been part of the discussion. So we've not had discussions about phased implementation of the civilian oversight mechanism.
Are there any other questions by this council? We have a motion and a second on the floor for floor amendment number eighteen, four, substitute three, oh fourteen dash thirteen. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
That fails on the seven rule. Okay, we are now on floor amendment.
This would be number nineteen. And councilor, this was distributed. And this has to do with the appointment of the board. And I think there's certainly a concern that on behalf of the task force members, that their recommendation had kind of insulated the process from being strictly a city council appointment. And so it's kind of a middle ground, and this would say on page nine, after line twenty-nine, insert the following before the word shall. So nine and twenty-nine, this talks about the accepting applications. And then staff shall, in collaboration and consultation with two community members appointed by the city council, comma. So the idea here is that the council, we would select two community members that have been involved or outspoken on these issues and have them work with our council staff in evaluating the applications.
Okay, let's go, let me go move, I have a floor amendment. We have a floor amendment, number nineteen to four, substitute three, oh fourteen dash thirteen. And we have a second, Counselor Gervinho.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Bettin, and Counselor Winter saying here, I guess whoever decides or agrees to be one of the two folks, either of the two folks, would not be able to serve the P O B.
I mean, that's probably, probably.
Self-explanatory.
I'll accept that, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Or it's understood, maybe it doesn't need to be, but.
Probably makes sense.
Mr. Johnson. President, Counselor, it's pretty clear that you can't be involved in selecting the members yourself, these guys.
Counselor Winter.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. The only concern that I have is how are we entirely going to pick these two members? And is it going to be political? That's the point. I mean, you only pick them two, who's going to make that decision? And I just think the politics might play into that.
Counselor Bettin.
Just in response to Counselor Winter, I think this would be appointed by the council. I think it would be by the vote of the full council.
Counselor Harris.
My concern is it just slows down the process. When you have to have an application process vote two, when you have to have a selection process vote two, then we have to vote whether two are, and then form the signs, and we have to do it all over again. So I, I just, for that reason, I think it's cumbersome.
Yeah, I mean, any, my favorite statement that I made up last year on the Rowleyard's Advisory Board is that transparency does add time to the process. But I do think that having some community members on the inside of the process that can report outside of the community members and say, well, it wasn't just an inside political job of the council, that we selected these people for, for, for the body. You know, that there's some outside eyes on the process, I think that's valuable.
Council Vice President Jones and then Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure what to say on that, Counselor Bettin. We're, we're kind of picking bits here, but it is a transparent situation. It will be public, who will ask for this. It will be, everything will be out there in the public, and I believe we, this is a non-political appointment. This is a non-political choice, and they're going to be weighed because of their qualifications, and different qualifications, and different thought processes, and different backgrounds, and different areas. I don't think there's anything to be gained from this, but I do think that it could slow down the process immensely. And I just don't think it's essential. And so I won't support this.
Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, anytime you have a community on there, but I think if you look at the task force that was chosen, and at the staff that made the decisions on who was going to be that task force, I thought it was a great, a great bunch of folks from different areas of the community. And I think that worked, and I think the same thing would happen here.
Counselor Gervinho.
I hear exactly what Counselor Bettin is saying, but Counselor Winter is absolutely right. We had, and I hate, I hate you for saying it, but Jessica Gonzalez and Julia Moya and other folks. But they were the two kind of key folks who did the choosing and vetting and, you know, shredding and whatever else we did. And they did a lot of good work, and I think that the task force proves that not only was the process good, but we have some good folks on the council. I wish we could, you know, you've heard me before, I'd rather include community in every situation. This time, I think I might have erred on the side of council staff, but I absolutely understand what you're saying, Counselor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for floor amendment number nineteen to bill number four, substitute three, oh fourteen dash thirteen. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
That fails in a five to three. Okay, that concludes all the amendments. And I'm going to make a motion, which I do not know will pass, to defer this item until the October sixth meeting. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second, and any questions? Counselor Bettin.
No questions, but just quickly, to reiterate, I think it would be nice for the community to be able to absorb what we've done tonight, for us to print out a version that doesn't have all the old language in it and all the straight throughs. And we might come up with an amendment or two at the next meeting, and I think there's nothing wrong with that. I'm committed to passing it at the next meeting, and I think there's support for the bill at the council. I mean, I'm hopeful that we'll have an amendment on this, but to avoid coming back and beating up on it later and to ensure that the community's got a good sense of what we've done tonight, I think it was, I think it was good that we had a special meeting. You know, it's very hard to focus on something that's important without a special meeting. But I think we could get this passed quickly at the next meeting and give us a little time to get some feedback on what we've done so far and how this really sits. And I had, I think, probably had a few words in here that I might be inclined to amend or concur or something that seemed to be in the wrong place. And we have a chance to see that between now and, what's the date? It will be the sixth.
Counselor Winter, Council Vice President Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me say, I really do appreciate all the work the council's done this night, the thoughtful amendments. I would hope that we wouldn't defer it. I think that this process has been going on for a long, long time, and I think we've been criticized some to keep moving it on. for a long, long time, and I think we've been criticized some, to keep moving it on and deferring it. I, I think a lot of these were technical. I think the issues that we, the two issues that we did have, I think that we did get those worked out. And, and again, let me just say that I think that this process was an award-winning process. I think the task force was just, was, was profound, that they did a fabulous job for this diverse group to work together to get basically ninety-five percent of the bill without any input from the DOJ there. I think it was very, very thoughtful done. I think it was open, I think it was very transparent. I remember when it came back to the council, some of the task force members had issues. We sent it back to them to, to look at it again, and I, I think that we've done our due diligence here. Very, very proud of this ordinance, very proud of the way the council's handled it, and Counselor Gordon, you're always a pleasure sponsoring it with you, so I would hope that we wouldn't defer, we wouldn't pass.
Counselor Gordon?
Thank you, Mr. President, and Counselor Winter, I feel the same way. I think that all the way through, an R and a D, research and development, that we did really good work, and I'm going to say we as the group, we, every did amazing work. This council has looked at this in its first iteration, its third introduction, its fifth send back, and all kinds of things. So, we, I think, know pretty much what's in it, and I understand that if somebody would like to see a clean bill, as it were, but I think that could happen tomorrow, by doing all the work and putting it online, and everyone would be able to, well, I don't know, not tomorrow, we'll have work, soon, we could do it soon, get it online, and people would be able to see it. And if we pass it now, I don't think we'd be doing anything that's damaging to the purpose. I think it'd be a great thing. And I go back to what Mr. Greenwood said, I think it's better to have a product, a baseline, a finished product, for Mr. Greenwood to go to the DOJ and say, this is the work that the council has done, and let's move forward.
Can I still believe and disagree with Ken going back to the DOJ, and I'm sure he's going to be going back to the DOJ with all the different amendments that we've included? This is, is an historical piece of legislation, and one of the most important pieces of legislation that we will vote on in our tenure, tenure as members of this body. But I just do not believe that waiting till October the sixth is going to make a huge difference. I know that the federal government is pushing hard, that the DOJ completes their work here in Albuquerque. They are now concerned also with Ferguson and what's gone on there. But Albuquerque, I feel, was vitally important, and I feel by waiting until the sixth of October, it gives the public one final opportunity to look at all of these different amendments. And tonight, I think we probably introduced about twenty-eight amendments, nineteen were voted on, two were rejected, and the rest were approved. So, I don't think it's anyone in this council chambers, and it doesn't at all, I think, hurt the public to be given that one final opportunity on this historical legislation. Counselor Harris?
And I can understand that inclination, and, and I think you said tenure, I heard ten years, that's a quite a bit of that long, it's been all over a year doing this, and I think it's, it's time to, to go ahead and enact the, the good work that we've done, and it has been good work. And, and this has been one of the most public processes of any bill that I've ever been involved in, so I don't think we need one more public meeting with another public process, we've had lots. And ultimately, it's our decision, and I think it's a good decision, it's a good bill. I know Mr. Greenwood wants to talk about if he has a preference over getting it done or waiting until October sixth, if it really matters, but to me, it does. I think some things, you know, have a time, and I think this is the bill's time, and I don't think we should, was the saying, you know, allow a chance to do something good because we're going to do something perfect go by, and this is something that's really good, and I am proud of it, and I think we should answer.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, on the floor, for deferral until October the sixth, for floor substitute three, oh fourteen dash thirteen is amended. All those in favor, raise your hand for the deferral. Say yes? Yes? Opposed?
No.
That fails on a four to four vote. We are back on the bill. Counselor Gordon, you're in.
While we discuss this, I thank a lot of the members, but I can't help but thank them all over again. And just as other councils have said, I'm very proud of this legislation. I think it, it will show itself as one of the greatest pieces of legislation that will go to the past, even in my next four years.
Counselor Benton?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I am very, very proud of this legislation, too, and in our, our staff folks did a wonderful, wonderful job in doing this. Jessica and June put the committee together, where they did a fabulous job, and, and the council, too, and I, I just, the task force was wonderful, I don't know how to keep saying that, because of the work that you did was, was unbelievable. I think that Counselor Gordon, I thought if they would even come up with any recommendations, because it was still diverse, but they, they did, and so, just very proud, and so, I urge your support.
Counselor Benton?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to point out some of the items I referred to, and maybe this is something that we could just have staff clean up, but there's a lot of language about the current POC. There is no current POC, the POC was abolished previously. And so, you know, that, to me, is a, it's a technical matter, but it's kind of, could be confusing to some people. Your thoughts on that, Mr. Johnson?
Mr. President, if you would give us an example?
Well, okay, starting right now, I'll see page two, line seventeen, the current POC, and then, line, page three, line twenty-four, the council hereby abolishes the POC. We, we did that last month, or some time back. I'm just looking for other occurrences of that.
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, we can, we can take those things, the, those references that you are referencing are in the legislative findings, and so they're intended for the historical perspective on the more laws, and the bill that the council passed last time, I think there was some confusion as to what that bill did. It suspended the POC, affecting the policies that were in place with it with the POB. So, I mean, it is a little bit of semantics, but I think it would concern both of us in their understanding and intent at the council, unless directed to paperwork and, and more by after the trial.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of comments. First, I want to say thank you to our sponsors, our Counselor Winter and Counselor Gordon. This has been an extremely long process, and I'm going to thank you, I'm committed to be committed to this. Also, the members of the task force, who've helped to community members, and doing a tremendous job in giving the input. And coming back, this was floor substitute number three, of all the various amendments. It took a tremendous amount of work by everyone involved, I think this.
It will be a historical piece of legislation that we can look back two years from now and say that we've done a great job. This will be a marquee, I think, for the entire test to look at this piece of legislation. And I think other cities across America will look at this legislation and probably implement a lot of these different ideas for their cities and their communities. Again, we, we took our time, we had the involvement of the Department of Justice, all the things that Greenwood, the new work, I know this has been quite over yet, we've still got to go back and finalize with the Department of Justice the consent decree, and if there's any changes or recommendations that come back from the DOJ, then we'll bring those forth to the council, we can get some amendments in this, is that correct?
Absolutely.
But, again, I just think it was a tremendous amount of work from, from so many people involved, and I want to thank this council also for, for the patience, because we defer this time to time again, but we no longer have the police oversight commission, we will soon hopefully have a three, seven, eight board to work with the community. Also, it's work with the police officers. We cannot forget the most important component of, of all of this, it's the women that work for the people. And, you know, I would hope that the two in your organization and your group can work on these changes, because I think this will be better, so not only for the police department, but to the citizenry of Albuquerque. And thank you. Counselor Gordon, we're going to oppose.